Welcome. I'm Cindy Edwards, Chairman of the Jacksonville Onslow Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and on behalf of the Chamber's Governmental Affairs Committee, I want to thank you for joining us for this Forum Onslow. The Governmental Affairs Committee works with government agencies on issues that impact business in our community. We monitor legislative issues that impact businesses, and we promote collaborative partnerships between business, government, military, and education sectors. We also present forums, just like this one, to create awareness for issues that matter to our entire community. We want to thank our media sponsor, The Daily News, the City of Jacksonville for the use of these facilities, and the City of Jacksonville Media Services for broadcasting this important forum. We also want to thank our candidates for Onslow County Commissioners for joining us this evening. Thank you. Our system of government only works when quality individuals give of their time to serve the residents of Jacksonville and Onslow County. Our corporate sponsor today is Duke Energy. At this time, I would like to introduce Millie Chalk, Duke Energy's District Manager for Government and Community Relations. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and on behalf of Duke Energy, welcome to Forum Onslow. Duke Energy is happy to partner with the Jacksonville Onslow Chamber for these important community forums. This afternoon, our focus will be on candidates running for Onslow County Commissioner. And in this turbulent and uncertain world that we live in, we recognize that voting is a privilege, and being an informed voter is our responsibility. I look forward to this informational session as our candidates outline their priorities for Onslow County. Duke Energy has a proud tradition of leadership and engagement in our communities and is proud to sponsor Forum Onslow. Now, on to our candidates.
Okay, well, thank you very much. My name is Elliot Potter. I'm a little bit of, I do a little bit of nothing, really, but I'm a talk show host in the morning, and I'm retired from the newspaper where I was editor and publisher there for a little more than three decades. And I've done a few of these, actually started probably sometime in the late 70s with Mr. Hargit, who's in the back back there. And so, the County Commissioners Forum has always been a sort of a highlight, and we've had a lot of notorious and very noble characters that have come through, and I appreciate them all. And I appreciate you guys and lady here for participating today. Now, there's a reason that you're here. In November 2016, voters in Onslow County voted to expand the size of the Board of Commissioners from five members to seven. Now, the voters will fill those two new seats in this upcoming 2018 vote. In the May primary, we have four Republicans seeking one of the party's two nominations, U4. That's who we have here today, but we do not have a Democratic primary because only one Democrat signed up, that'd be Thomasina Moore. So, after the election in May, after the primary election in May, two Republicans will then move on and face Ms. Moore in the general election in November. And we will have another forum, the Chamber will sponsor another forum for the general election ballot whenever that comes around. We do hope to have a very informative and enjoyable evening. We'll spend a few moments now going over the rules so that we can help make that happen. This is the Chamber's forum, of course, but it has very much become the people's forum over the years, simply because I think people have become to rely on it, they like the format, and I think that they have come to understand the importance of this kind of discussion. The public has been invited to submit questions, some of them have submitted questions since latest tonight using the cards. We have also had questions submitted by members of the Chamber's Governmental Affairs Committee. And then I helped write some up as well. So, we're going to, we're also going to continue with a format, after the questions are presented to you in a round robin fashion, we're going to continue in a format in which you will have an opportunity to rebuttal or raise rebuttals. And you have two cards there, so you'll have two opportunities during the program. So, at the end of a line of questioning, if there's something that you would like to say as a sort of a point or a counterpoint to something that someone else said, or perhaps just to expand on your own views, then raise your card, and then I'll recognize you for that purpose. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer questions. You'll have two minutes for the first question because we've asked you to include some introductory material on yourself, but then 90 seconds after that. Your rebuttal times are a minute each, and then 90 seconds if foreclosing, and as long as time is running okay. If not, we may cut that back a little bit. There are some basic rules of engagement that I would ask that you follow. One would be to consider that this is a forum and not a debate. So, that would be maybe a little bit different, some of the scraps you see on television. We ask that you would address the audience with your answers and not each other. We also ask that you adhere to the time limits, of course. When you see a yellow light somewhere around here, it will be, that will mean that there are about 10 seconds remaining for you to complete the sentence that you're on, and then that's what we ask you to do when you get the red light. It may seem a little abrupt, but rather than go into the whole thing of trying to cut somebody off, we just ask that you complete that sentence and let it go at that. So, that's what we have. If you have any questions, now's the time to raise them. If not, we'll get started. And we will start with Mr. Foster, work our way down to Ms. Sullivan. Candidates, give me a, give us a brief summary of your personal background, your record of leadership in the community, and your reason for running for County Commissioner.
First, I'd like to thank the Chamber and the City of Jacksonville, as well as Mr. Potter for hosting this. He's done a great job with that. Of course, in the past, I've always sat out there and watched everyone up here, and it's much different sitting up here than it is sitting out there. First of all, Tim Foster, candidate for Onslow County Commissioner. Born and raised here in Onslow County, I take pride in that. I graduated from Onslow County Schools, Southwest High School, to be exact. I left Southwest High School, spent a year at Methodist College in Fayetteville, and decided that I liked UNCW a little bit better. Graduated from UNCW, come home, and started teaching at Hunter's Creek Middle School. I spent three years there before I transferred to Southwest High School, where I continued teaching, coaching basketball, as well as soccer. Then I decided that I wanted to increase the level of influence. I went back to school, East Carolina University, where I received my master's degree in school administration. And the last 10 years, I have been a principal and administrator in Onslow County Schools. In that capacity, I have served on the North Carolina High School Athletic Association's Board of Directors, where we are very involved with all of the high schools across the state of North Carolina. Decisions impact all of our high school athletes, from the mountains to the coast. Also, served as the President of the Onslow County Principal and Assistant Principal Association, and currently sit on the Advisory Board for the State Employees Credit Union on Highway 17. Why Onslow County Commissioner? Why Tim Foster? My family is a family of service, family of service to the community, and I want to continue giving back. After 27 years in the Onslow County Schools, I want to give back to Onslow County because Onslow County has given so much to me, and I want to ensure that Onslow County is doing what it's been doing and provides a positive place to work, live, and raise a family. And I look forward to Onslow County being the home to my sons and continue on to my grandchildren.
Thank you, Mr. Hawley.
I'm Jackson Hawley. I'm running for Onslow County Board of Commissioners. I was born and grew up in Onslow County. I graduated from Wyatt High School on Piney Green, attended community college, Coastal Carolina Community College, and transferred to the University of North Carolina Wilmington, where I obtained my Bachelor of Science in Business Administration. From there, well, my knowledge of finance, economics, and various other business principles, I think, would be a good fit for working as a County Commissioner, due to the fact that I'll be able to make good decisions regarding the budgetary needs of the county. Growing up, my grandfather instilled in me the importance of business development and economic development in the county. He founded one of the largest plant and flower nurseries in eastern North Carolina, New River Nursery. And as I grew up, he taught me business principles and why it's important for government regulation and government to support the growth of business operations, especially on the county level. My father worked for the, worked for my family company before moving on and owning a welding and fabrication shop where I worked for years before attending college. Recently, I obtained my North Carolina broker license, real estate broker license, so I can further my understanding of property and real estate ownership. And I think that'll be a good fit for working as an Onslow County Commissioner, due to the needs of understanding property taxes and any needs that the people have for, well, when the county purchases or sells public property for budgetary needs. My mother, she's in the audience, she taught for the Onslow County School System for 30 years, where she taught for Hunter's Creek Middle School.
Thank you. Okay.
There we go.
Okay, thank you.
That's me.
Okay, Mr. Shanahan.
I'm William Shanahan. I'm a local family law and criminal defense attorney. I am not born or not born and raised in Onslow County, and the reason for that is because my mother, after she graduated high school, became an active-duty servicemember in the United States Air Force, and she was stationed in Charleston Air Force Base, where she met my father, who was also in the Air Force. And I was born there in Charleston. Given that, I've bounced around a lot and have lived in a number of different areas, which is a lifestyle that I know many people in Onslow County are pretty familiar with. After, over the course of that time, though, Onslow County was a mainstay in my life. It's where I spent many summers and holidays, coming back to visit family, and I still have lots of family in the area. After I graduated from Notre Dame Law School, I made the decision, along with my wife, to come back to Onslow County and set up practice here. Work at Silva, Kieran, and Associates here in town, and I became involved in the local community. I became involved in the Republican Party. I've spent the last two years on the Onslow County Board of Elections, representing the Republican Party in that capacity. I'm also a member of the Citizen Advisory Board as a Jacksonville's representative on the Parks and Recreation Board for Onslow County. And I'm running on a platform of fiscal responsibility, transparency, and informed decision-making. And what that means to me is that when the board does something, whatever it does, it needs to be open and transparent with the community about what it's doing. It needs to be able to give good, evidence-based reasons for why it's doing it, and it better be able to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan?
My name is Reva Sullivan. I'm also running for County Commissioner. I moved here from Wilmington in my early 20s in 1993 to start my own business, to start my first business. It didn't take long for me to get connected to Onslow County. I remember joining the Chamber, and Suzanne Sartell led me around and introduced me to lots of business owners. I then joined Rotary and quickly got connected and realized something that was missing out of my life was service to the community. I realized that that club showed me different areas in the community that we could serve and lead, and that is where I learned most of my leadership. I was in Junior Women's Club, I was, I went from secretary to president. Rotary Club, I've been in 22 years, and I've done Meals on Wheels. Everywhere that I could volunteer, everywhere that I could serve, I just, I signed up. That led me to Jacksonville City Council. If you want something to change, you can't just sit back and complain about it, you have to roll up your sleeves and go make the change, find out ways that you can make the change. I really enjoyed being on City Council, made some tough decisions that, in the end, paid off, and we can see a whole lot of fruit of it now. As a mother, one of the reasons I'm running, as a mother of a firefighter, mother of a soldier, four children grown, I want them all to come back to Onslow County. I want them to all pursue careers in Onslow County. I want my family near me, and I want to see people in the base, which are other people's children, sons and daughters, and people out in the community, to have that type of a quality of life. I do believe in a better tomorrow, and I believe that I need to roll up my sleeves and help. Thank you.
Right, thank you. All right, we'll sort of sink our teeth into some of the issues here, and Ms. Sullivan, we'll start this questioning with you and work our way down. What is your position on raising taxes? Even if you were opposed to more taxes, how would you address increasing demands for funding in certain areas such as school construction? And finally, do you favor sales tax over property tax?
Thank you for the question. I absolutely favor sales tax over property tax. We have many people that drive through Onslow County, Jacksonville, Swansboro, Sneed's Ferry, Surf City, Topsil, that spend money, that utilize some of our services. They drive on our roads, they get in accidents and utilize our first responders, they utilize our police, but they don't pay into that because they're just passer-throughers. So, sales tax is a way that everybody gets to pay for the services that we utilize, whether you live here or not, you're utilizing them. So, I definitely agree with the sales tax over property tax, although I'm not an advocate of raising taxes. I see people question what their taxes are going for, or if the taxes go too high, then they can't afford to buy a house, or they can't afford this, or they can't afford that. We do have to have a quality of life, at the same time, we have to look out for our And, you know, like government, when they, when they need more money, they just raise taxes, and that's usually when it affects the homeowners, the citizens.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Shanahan, you want me to repeat the question?
I think I've got it. You know, we've got four Republicans up here at the table, we've got five Republicans currently serving on the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. I don't think that a single one of us want to raise taxes. I don't think that it's something that any of us are looking to do. As it relates to property tax and sales tax, on the property tax front, we have a very competitive tax rate currently. We're at 67.5 cents per $100 of value on property. The statewide average is in the ballpark of about 89 cents. So, we have a competitive rate. We need to maintain a competitive rate. As it relates to the breakdown between property and sales tax, right now, there's a legislative cap on what sort of sales tax we can even have, and I think we're sitting somewhere, maybe 1% or 3/4 of a percent below that cap, and a lot of that is mandated towards certain types of spending on the sales tax side. So, I think in a theoretical realm, I do like sales taxes better than property taxes, but we are sort of bound to the extent that we can use sales taxes, and so we have to take that into consideration.
Okay, Mr. Hawley.
Yes. As far as taxes are concerned, between the two, obviously, sales taxes is a more favorable approach. In many cases, property taxes are necessary for a county to run effectively and efficiently. It's important that these taxes are allocated properly, and that's definitely one of my goals. I definitely want to make that my top priority, to ensure that the taxpayer dollars are spent in the right way. And one of the top things in our county is we need to focus on school growth enhancement and providing excellence in education, which is the Onslow County Board of Education's vision there. It's important, it's important that all of the departments run efficiently, and property taxes and sales taxes, in conjunction with each other, provide the necessary means for the departments to run efficiently. So, but between the two, obviously, sales taxes is a more preferable approach. If something needs to be raised and we have things that need to be spent, definitely sales taxes is, would be one of my main focuses, but like I said, property taxes is always going to continue to be, whether it's county taxes or city taxes, is necessary, so.
Thank you. Mr. Foster?
I don't think anyone in the room wants to raise taxes. I don't think anyone sitting at the table is going to suggest raising taxes. But we can't predict the future either. We don't know what's going to happen down the road, but historically, we're looking at Onslow County and the growth to Onslow County, which in turn brings more revenue in as the housing continues to grow. Funding other areas, I think the sitting county commission has done a real good job of building their budget and looking forward, and not sitting and looking back, but looking forward and making decisions with the tax revenue. We want to make sure that we are being good stewards with the tax dollar. A lot of times, if you look at, hey, I want to raise taxes is because maybe we didn't do a good job with the money that we had received over the past year with the revenues. When it comes to sales tax versus property tax, without a doubt, we'd rather look at the sales tax, because the sales tax, as stated earlier, that's what everybody's going to pay, regardless of where you're coming from. If you stop in for a basketball game at one of the local high schools, those folks coming out of Carrick County are going to put some sales tax money into the coffers of Onslow County. So, that'd be a wonderful thing, but as stated, we're limited in that area, and some of those are already set aside for different items in the budget. So, at the end of the day, let's make sure we keep taxes as low as possible and are allowed to meet the needs of all the citizens in Onslow County.
Thank you. Okay, we discussed, even though the county commissioners don't directly control the budgets of the school board, except for the fact that you provide the funding, I'd like to ask you a question about school safety. It's an issue that's come up in all of our forums so far, and like I say, we talked about it at length at the Board of Education forum. And Mr. Shanahan, I'll address this question to you first. There has been a lot of talk lately about hardening our schools to make them safer. What are your thoughts about what we can do and what should be done for school safety?
So, the point man on the school safety issue is going to be the Board of Education, it's going to be the law enforcement and municipalities and the sheriff's office, and we play sort of a supportive role, mainly to do with funding. It's important that those agencies are communicating with each other, and I believe that they are. Sometimes, they can't tell the community exactly how much they're communicating or what they've got set up because of the security concerns of that, even though they would oftentimes, I think, really like to, to help people feel better about what's going on. I think that one of the big roles the Board of Commissioners can play moving forward is as it relates to school construction. We have to build new schools. That's a reality that we're facing, and as we do that, we need to make smart decisions in how we design those schools, incorporating security features that are part of modern architecture today, and that's going to be an important part of what the board does. We also need to work with the school board to make sure that we have resources in local schools to intervene when there are problems, preferably at the beginning stages of those problems, and that may be by trying to fund additional counselors in high schools and middle schools.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hawley?
Yes. So, school safety is of great concern, especially in recent years, due to recent catastrophic events, and it's always, it should always be school, the school system's top priority to ensure the safety of teachers, staff, and faculty. As far as the county is concerned, we have a few things in place to ensure the safety of schools. One of the main ones is the School Resource Officer Program through the Onslow County Sheriff Office. It's important that these officers have specialized training and the ability to work with the teachers and students and to effectively communicate with them if, in fact, a threat is present, and it's important that they continue to receive funding to provide these specialized skills. Okay, so, it's important, it's important also for the community to stay vigilant and to ensure that if they see something out of the ordinary, whether it's in their kid's school, or their child comes home and presents a problem that they've had in class, or whether or not there's, there may be a threat on campus, or the potential of it, that it needs to be addressed, and the community needs to do its part as well. And I think it's important that the county focuses on continuing to improve school safety in our county, so.
Thank you. Mr. Foster?
School safety. There's not a day that I don't walk through the doors of Southwest High School where I'm not thinking about the safety of the 780-plus kids that I'm responsible for. That is our number one or my number one priority. First, communication. We've got to do a better job, always, when we're communicating with our stakeholders in the community, letting them know that doors open, and if there's something going on, you hear something, you say something. One area that I would really like to see us expand on is the School Resource Officer. Currently, you have one in all middle schools and all high schools in Onslow County. I'd love to see a resource officer in the elementary schools full-time as well. For a twofold, there's Officer On Dick. It's, he's there, or she is there, to provide that safety for those students, but at the same time, we bring back that possible Officer Friendly Program, where a kindergarten student's first encounter with law enforcement is positive, and they are able to build that relationship up. So, when they come in in kindergarten, they establish it, they move through middle school into high school, and they see that resource officer as someone that will help them. So, absolutely, it's going to cost more money, no doubt, but I don't think anyone sitting in this room or watching this streaming right now is willing to be the person that wants to put a price tag on the safety of kids.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan?
Well, I think we can all agree that children need quality education in a safe environment. I agree with Tim Foster quite a bit on that education part. In the beginning, when they're in elementary school, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, the school resource officers, the officer friendly, or just the officer walking through the halls, that is, that makes the students comfortable. Sometimes, when they get to middle school or high school, the first time they talk to the resource officers when they're in trouble. We don't want them backing off to say something to the police officer because they relate that with trouble. They relate that with, you know, somebody's doing something, that they're doing something wrong. So, if you've got, if you've got the officers walking through the elementary schools, they're making friends, they're comfortable with them, and then when they do see something or when they are uncomfortable with something, they have somebody to go to, because teachers have enough on their plate, they have a lot on their plate. We don't necessarily want to make them the ones to protect or to be the security. They're going to protect them anyway, you know? When I have employees, they're like my children. I'm going to do whatever I have to do to protect them as well, and I'm sure teachers feel that tenfold.
Okay, thank you. Now, when I start with, I'm going to use a random order of questioning from now on, so, you have rebuttal?
Yes, I have rebuttal. So, I'd like to also point out, the, it was mentioned that the elementary schools do not currently have a School Resource Officer on campus. It's definitely important that all of the, all of the campuses have a trained law enforcement officer on campus, that's important. I personally have experience working in a security services department of a local community college, so I have an understanding of what a campus needs to remain safe. Our current Board of Commissioners, a lot of them are comprised of previous prior law enforcement, so they have that ability to understand what's needed in the schools, and they already present that. And if elected, I'll definitely be able to expand on that and provide more, more school safety in the, for the future, and we can look for more long-term plans and approaches to this. We can't just sit by and not allocate funds where they need to be appropriately allocated for the sheriff department to provide, or the Jacksonville Police Department to provide necessary school resource officers and any other implementations to provide better school security, so, thank you.
Thank you, Hawley. Anybody else? Okay. We're going to, like I said, we're going to kind of jump around as far as orders, so pay attention, I'll just call your name, and you can, you can go with that. Okay, and Mr. Hawley, you'll start this line of questioning. The current commissioners have made the, responding to the opioid crisis a leading priority, and have worked toward establishing a treatment center. What approaches do you support in limiting the impact of opioids in our community and related drugs?
Yeah, so, the opioid crisis is quite a bad issue for the county. So, I believe we're ranked 12th among counties in the nation for opioid misuse. That's pretty high, and if I got that statistic wrong, then excuse me, but we are very high in regards to opioid misuse on a national level as a county. As far as procedures that need to be taken to prevent opioid misuse and to better the community, we have a treatment center that's in the works, and this treatment center is going to be able to provide valuable resources for people who have opioid, who are battling opioid issues. And it's important that we continue to allocate funds towards programs like this, for this is a good start, and in the future, more things... is a good start, and in the future, more things can be presented to help solve the opioid crisis that we have here in Onslow County, because it's rampant, and it's definitely something we need to handle quickly and efficiently. So I'll definitely be able to help with this. I have, like I said, I have school safety knowledge and experience, and I've encountered drug situations where people have had issues with that, and I'll be able to take that to the table and help prevent this in the future.
Ms. Sullivan?
This is a great question. As a, again, as a mother of a first responder here in Onslow County, I hear a lot of the issues that we have going on that we don't know. I believe that is three-part. That is treatment, step one, education. Education, not only when they're getting treatment or after they get treatment, but education before they even start getting into the problem. And it's a cooperative, it's a cooperative with law enforcement and other agencies coming together. If the county commissioners have the resources to contribute to the solution, whether it be with the schools or whether it be with the Sheriff's Department, we need to bring all the agencies to the table, all the municipalities to the table. It's the partnerships. I see all the time the things that happen in the county, if they don't know what's happening with the, in the city, we don't even know how big these numbers are. I read just before I came in here that last year, there were over 60,000 deaths due to overdoses. If we're 12th, what's 12th of that? I mean, I'm a calculator, but it's a lot. It's too many, and I don't think we even know how bad it really is. Discussion, treatment, action.
Thank you. And Mr. Foster?
Opioid crisis, without a doubt, is just that. It's a crisis. And we need first take the stigma off of it of being bad people, because there's a lot of good people that are fighting a monster or a beast that's got control of them. We have a facility that is opening in August, and Commissioner Knapp has done a very good job of calling that a triage center, because that's what it is. It's a crisis center for right now. The question is, what will we do after that? And that's where we have to work to provide support, education, and opportunities for that person to continue down the path of rehabilitation. We also have to look at, and what I call, or would like to call, the three-pronged effect is that we have to look at law enforcement as well. We need law enforcement adequately funded so they can be on the streets taking on folks that are taking advantage of those that have got hooked on those opioids. We need to give law enforcement the tools they need to get the dealers off the streets. We need the triage center or the mental health or crisis center to help them in the now. And we need to work and make sure we have put something in place to support and rehabilitate. And that doesn't just stop or start there. It also goes to the folks that are currently incarcerated, that we need to do things in the prisons to help rehabilitate, educate, and when we put them back out in public, they're prepared to go on and be successful, where they can conquer that beast that will be with them forever.
And Mr. Shanahan?
So as part of what I do day-to-day as an attorney, I come across this issue all the time. I mean, on a near-daily basis, I'm meeting with people and talking to people and their families who, whose lives have been absolutely destroyed by addiction. People who had promising futures and who have done wonderful things in the past. I mean, former service members who have done great things on behalf of this country, who get caught up in this issue. It's not a respecter of persons. It can attack any person from any background and any family, and it's a huge problem facing our community. I would say that there are two components. One is on the treatment side, which we've heard a lot about. We do have this crisis treatment center that'll be opening in August. I think that that's a great thing, and I think it's a great example of this sort of local government leadership that you can get out of a county commission, who's brought in partners at this point that include two other counties. And so it's a huge testament to our current board that they've been able to put this thing together in the time that they have. But there's also a law enforcement component to this. We have people who are out on the streets profiting from the misery that they're inflicting on people's lives, and we have to work with our sheriff's office and municipal law enforcement to make sure that we are able to address that side of the issue as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Foster, you'd be the first one to answer this question. What kind of support do you feel the county should provide to efforts to build a multipurpose center or a sports center here?
Our children need a place to go, and a multi-sports complex is something that I'm very much in favor of and support. It's going to cost, there's going to be a cost to that, but in the end, that is something that is going to provide access for our youth to have someplace to go and be a part of. I can remember the day that Onslow Pines Parks and Recreation opened right down the street from my house. My father went down and was one of the Little League, minor league baseball coaches, and I had the opportunity to go down and play for him. That gave me a great place to be and something to grow up in. Discipline, rules, work with others, and a good, positive place to be, somewhere where they teach you to be a leader, not a follower, and you take that on. Now, multi-sports complex is something that is going to cost upfront, and things are going to cost upfront, but that also can provide a source of revenue if we can start hosting more state, even multi-state tournaments. The East Coast Invitational brings teams from all over the place, and, you know, you love to say it, beds on heads. That's occupancy tax. That's money coming into the county, coming into the city. Let's expand that. Let's bring in some soccer tournaments, some softball tournaments, and wouldn't it be nice to see the Air Force and Naval Academies play baseball in Onslow County rather than Kinston?
Mr. Shanahan?
So I was able recently to review a study that was done on this particular project about five years ago. It was a feasibility study that was done in partnership with the City of Jacksonville and the Sports Commission, and it was an organization that was, that looked at what we could do and what it would cost and the benefits it would bring. Obviously, it's five years old, so the data would need to be updated if we were looking at it now. But what that study showed is that the ongoing, that the initial construction cost of a facility would be in the ballpark of about $15 million. That on an ongoing basis, it would, the operating cost would be between about $500,000 and $350,000, depending on the tax revenue that was collected based on the tourism increase due to the facility. But the economic impact that was projected to have from people who, once they got here, spending money in our community, was in the ballpark over five, after five years, supposed to be in the ballpark of about $4.4 million. That seems like a good deal if we're able to pull that off. So I'm certainly interested and supportive of the idea. I would say that it would only support it if we were able to fund the project through tourism dollars and without raising property taxes. But I think that it's absolutely something that the county commission should pursue.
Ms. Sullivan?
Big fan of sports, and I look at sports as diversion, recreation for children to do some, to do so they don't get bored and get in trouble. It goes along with the, with education. It goes along with being a good citizen when you get older. But again, I believe in partnerships. The base, the other municipalities, if Onslow County does a multi-sports center just themselves without the help of base or the other cities, we're competing against each other again, and we're duplicating other services. When I was coaching baseball, I was, I was in the city, but almost half of my kids were from the county, and they had to pay extra. But the county has a recreational department. The city has a recreational department. Why can't we work some of these things together so we're not duplicating some of the services? And that would be a conversation that I think we should have. I don't think we should ignore the fact that we don't have one, and we need one, and we have a lot of students that play sports, but I think we need to get the right parties to the table.
Mr. Hawley?
Yes. Yes, so the multi-purpose or multi-sport complex would definitely be a great asset for the county if the funds can be appropriated. And this can be done through grants and county funds. However, that's the first thing, that's the first step, is seeing how we're going to fund this venture. As far as benefits for the county, it could definitely provide students after school, another location to have after-school programs, and it spanned on that, what the schools already offer. It could also benefit us with a local league, sports could come and play here, and it definitely could be a valuable tourism aspect. And that's something that always needs to be expanded upon, is our tourism in Onslow County, whether it's from our beaches or various other things. But a multi-sports complex could be an asset for the county regarding tourism, but mainly it would be a good community engagement undertaking. But the first thing is, you got to find out how it's funded and whether that's through grants or county funding, but that'd be, that's something that's definitely can be looked into, so.
Thank you. Take a breath a minute. I want to introduce you to my, to our timekeeper, Caitlin Diaz of the Chamber staff, and thank you all for adhering to the time limitations that we have or the time limits. Seems to be going very smoothly for you. I will start this line of questioning off with Mr. Shanahan, and I will ask you, how do you feel about funding for public safety, specifically volunteer fire departments? Would you be willing to create a fire district tax to fund fire departments in these various locations?
Well, I think this is a proposal that's been voted on a couple of times within the county, and it's failed every time it's been put to the voters. And so I think what we really need to see is, out of the county commissioners, a commitment to making sure that our volunteer fire departments are staffed at appropriate levels. I recently was able to sit down with one of the chiefs of our volunteer fire departments and talk about the struggles and challenges that they're facing. Since 2007, the number of volunteers has decreased by about 27%. And of those volunteers, they're able to give less time than what they previously used to be able to do, and that's understandable. We're a busier world. We have more families with two people working, and so it's harder to rely purely on volunteers. We have a great program in Onslow County, the Emergency Responders Program, where we're able to put full-time emergency responders under the direction and authority of our volunteer fire departments to help fill those gaps. But we need more of them, and we have, there are times right now where unfortunately, if you, depending on what part of the county you're in, if you called 911 at 2:00 in the morning, you, the fire station that's closest to you may not have anyone there. And those, the time that's lost there can have a huge impact, and so we have to make it a priority.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley?
Yes, so public safety is always very important for a county. As far as fire districts are concerned and our volunteer fire departments, it's important that the funding that they have is adequate for the population of the communities that they serve. Each of our fire, volunteer fire departments serve a relatively fast-growing population. We have a few different volunteer fire departments in Onslow County. It's necessary that they, a lot of times, they're understaffed, and I've read recent reports where sometimes response times can be low. But we need to ensure that something, you know, that we need to look at this and take a good approach to solving this problem. Fire district tax, that could be an avenue to go down, but, you know, everything should be explored before an action is taken, and to ensure that our fire departments provide adequate safety for our communities. And whether that's them supplementing EMS, the Onslow County EMS and the Onslow County Fire Services, Onslow County Emergency Services as a whole, that could be a necessary thing to, avenue to go down, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Mr. Foster.
How many of you can remember those Saturday afternoons when you weren't sure what time it was? In my neighborhood, the fire horn went off at Southwest Volunteer Fire Department about noon, and you knew what time it was. It was time to go in the house and get a peanut butter jelly sandwich, so you could go outside and play the rest of, rest of the day. And then you go down to the Southwest Volunteer Fire Department, you buy a barbecue sandwich, or you buy a leftover pint of barbecue. You spend your money in your community, support your community fire departments. You go down to Topsail Beach. Right now, you're going to find today that you're going to be putting some money in a boot, because they're going to be at the red light as traffic stops, asking for you to put some money in the boots. So in essence, we are really funding our volunteer fire departments at a basic level of commitment from the community members, and we have several full-time folks that are stationed at our volunteer fire departments across the county. I do see in the future where that need is going to grow, to where we're going to have to fund and look at sending more money to our volunteer fire departments and addressing those needs. Finding that money, the feasibility of that, is going to be something that we're going to have to work on and make sure we're ready, ready to do, because the days of when you'd go to the local fire department, throw a $100 bill on the counter and take a $2 sandwich are gone, they won't give you $2 for a $2 sandwich. So we really need to work and look down long-term of what we need to do to support that.
Thank you. And Ms. Sullivan?
Volunteer fire department is one of those agencies that you don't think about until you need them. We need them. And as a Republican, I'm not going to vote to add another layer of tax or add another layer of government to it, but we should be able to find some resource in the budget to send there. It will benefit the residents in the long run. It will benefit the citizens. Each fire department has an ISO rating. Based on that rating is what their insurance costs. It could directly affect their homeowner's insurance, which would directly affect their monthly payment in their mortgages. So I absolutely agree with finding some resources to contribute to the solution of high response times. They shouldn't have to wait 17, 18, 19, 20 minutes. In the city, I don't, I don't always think about the volunteer fire department, because I have a fire department that would get to my neighborhood in three minutes. The citizens of the county deserve the same thing.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Sullivan, you have the first crack at the next question. The addition of two commissioners could swing the recent vote of the board to defeat the brunch bill. That would have allowed the sale of alcohol two hours earlier in unincorporated areas of the county on Sundays. What is your position on this proposal?
My position on this proposal is, if it's legal in this municipality and it's legal in this municipality, it's unfair to businesses across the street that can't serve it than the ones that are on this side of the street. So if it ever came up, which I wouldn't bring it up, but if it did come up, I would be in favor of it.
Okay. Mr. Foster?
I watched the commissioners' meeting that night. You have to do a lot of soul-searching. I think Commissioner Price made the comparison of, on one side, we're talking about a triage center or a crisis center. Then on the other hand, we're talking about a brunch bill, two hours before we can sell I just don't see a problem with holding off for two hours. And I know some people are thinking, well, I don't agree with you. Understandable. There's going to be a lot of things that we're going to communicate and talk about and we're not going to agree on, but sometimes it is good just to sit at the table and have good discourse and know that a decision's going to be made. And currently, I support the decision that was made. I don't think two hours of serving alcohol on Sunday is going to make or break a business that day. So I would, I would, I would support the commissioners in their, in their last vote on that.
Mr. Shanahan?
So I support the brunch bill, support allowing the sales. For me, it comes from just a place of freedom. I believe in limited government. My analysis sort of works backwards, I think, from what Mr. Foster just articulated. My analysis sort of works backwards, I think, from what Mr. Foster just articulated in that, in my mind, you don't justify giving someone the ability to do something. You have to justify taking it away. And we're talking about a legal substance that business owners want to be able to sell legally and someone wants to buy it. You know, if personally, you don't, and I don't think that I've ever been to brunch, quite frankly, and had a drink, but if you don't want to do that, that's fine. You don't do that. We still have laws on the books regarding DWI and public intoxication. Those aren't going anywhere. And so to me, it's just a question of freedom, and I'd be happy to support the brunch bill.
Mr. Hawley.
Yes, so the brunch bill would be definitely beneficial for businesses to have those extra two hours on Sundays. That could bring in some revenue, absolutely. But in the long run, I think it's inconsequential whether or not this, you know, this is, I mean, there's other things that need to be addressed in the county. However, yes, I would, I would be in support of allowing businesses to, another two hours to provide alcoholic drinks on, on a Sunday morning. As was mentioned, there are already laws in place to prevent reckless driving under the influence. So if something, if that undertaking were to allow for this to continue or the rate at which people are being arrested or charged with driving under the influence, then it would need to be reevaluated. However, for the economic benefits to the county, I would support, I would support the brunch bill. But as I said, there's definitely other issues on the table that need addressing first. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Foster, you've got a rebuttal. Go ahead.
Well, Caitlin, I appreciate the fact that you're willing to hit those buttons to give us those minutes because I've been known to be someone that really needed someone telling me to stop talking. This one, I'm just going to come out and share my thoughts on this, and I agree with Mr. Hawley on this. Dagum, there's got to be something more important that we can address as county commissioners with what all is going on in our county. And this is something that, is it costing this money? Is it costing that business money? I would like to, I'd like to see that because if it is, then maybe that's something that I would look at differently. So if there's anybody that is willing to share those numbers, I would be very much ready to see those numbers and see what impact it has because I know some of the surrounding municipalities have allowed it, the county does not. But if I can see those numbers, I'd like to, I'd like to see those numbers. I don't think businesses are going, are going out of business from it, but I'd really like to, to focus on some things that really are making a major difference in the lives of our citizens, and that could be one.
Okay, and you do have any other rebuttal on that one? Okay, well, you do have first crack at the next question, which I'm going to kind of follow up on what you just said. And that is, what idea or ideas about county government can you present to the audience and offer to the people that haven't been discussed already? Looking for some innovation here.
Now, we've built a shell building out in Burton Park, and currently, it's just what it is. It's a shell building. We don't have anybody in there. Regional skills centers coming there, so hopefully that'll add an attraction to that. We're not in the business for profit, so when we build a shell building, sometimes we have to be ready to take a risk to get someone to come in. Maybe that's incentives to bring a business in. I don't know how much that building costs, but sometimes you might have to take a loss to be able to get someone to come in there to generate revenue. I've been in charge of budgets for 10 years at the schools, and sometimes you've got to spend the little money to get a lot back. And I think if we really start looking at doing a little more incentives and knowing that it's more important to get somebody in the building and over the years recoup that money where we can continue to grow economically. Last thing that I'd like to share is just let's be totally transparent on what we're doing in government. Let's make sure we talk about it and we do a good job most of the time, but let's put everything out there, other than the personnel issues. Let's make sure we are transparent, everything that we, we are doing and trying to accomplish. We're in this together, and economic and business in Onslow County is something that we've got to really focus on.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley.
Yes, basically for ideas, for future government, for anything relating to the government. Obviously, school safety, school, school is a top priority for any county. It should be. Economic growth is another one. It's very important that we have economic growth and we support local businesses and allow them to thrive in the county. The way this is accomplished is through properly funding the various departments within the county. We also need to ensure that any regulations that are in place that stifle economic development of local businesses, they need to be looked at and they need to be evaluated and reconsidered. We need to have proper economic growth in the county while at the same time adhering to historic, keeping the historic integrity of the county, and we have a great historic, a great history in this county. I grew up here and my grandparents have told me many stories of the county, and it was great to hear those growing up. And I'd love to keep that historic integrity and prevent that from being affected, as well as the environmental integrity of our county. We have pristine beaches. We have a great diverse environment, and I think that that's one thing that needs to be taken into consideration as well when any policies are taken, undertaken by the county or the city. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Shanahan.
So anyone who has built or remodeled a building in Onslow County or probably anywhere has dealt with the frustration of having a building inspector show up and tell you one thing and then have another inspector show up a couple of weeks later to tell you something totally different and having to engage in the frustration and cost of having to adjust what you're doing based on that. And it's natural that that happens. You know, different people have different ways of approaching their job, and it's understandable that that takes place. Recently, well, a couple of years ago, my firm remodeled our building, and there's a story that I could tell you about an exit sign and the frustration that one exit sign caused. I don't have enough time to go into it. I think it makes sense to have a system where we have a single inspector, in the legal field, we call it retaining jurisdiction, but a single inspector that from the issuance of the building permit until the issuance of the occupancy certificate, that's their project, and that's what they're managing and overseeing. I think it makes sense. I think that it would erase a lot of frustration that people who, we want to make capital improvements and engage in the economic activity that they're engaging in. I think it would make the process easier, less daunting. We might get more of it.
Thank you. Ms. Solomon.
Something that I haven't spoke about tonight or that hasn't been brought up, that is a huge passion of mine, and I, if I was elected on the Board of Commissioners, that I would bring us to the table is to put an end to domestic violence and child abuse. I'm working a lot behind the scenes with some things, and I'm so impressed that our sheriff is, is bringing it to the forefront. Something that people don't like to talk about, it's something like, that people just kind of want to deal with in the, you know, in the background, but we have to talk about it. We have to talk about things like that to stop it. And again, I believe that the county has resources to contribute to solutions regarding domestic violence, and that's, that's a big one for me.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley, we'll start with you this time. Do you support the federal government's plans to allow oil exploration and drilling off the coast of North Carolina? And I had also this, a form of this question that was submitted from a member of the audience who wants to make sure that, bring up the issue of possible spills and why would we open our shores to such a risk? So there's your question.
Okay, well, as I approached this question, this is definitely a debatable topic, whether or not we should explore seismic testing and offshore drilling off the coast of North Carolina. As far as the county is concerned, the county has a partial say in whether or not we have this. Due to our county being so close to the coast, we can put in a recommendation towards the state and even on the federal level through the commissioners regarding this matter for or opposed to it. Now, in regards to economic benefits of this, obviously, there can be some. But in my humble, humble opinion, I believe that the risk of destroying our beaches or the potential of any other risk related to the environment through the seismic testing, which is relatively unknown, the long-term, long-term repercussions of seismic testing and offshore drilling. I think it's, I'm opposed to this personally, and that's, that's my say on it. I strongly believe in environmental preservation for the county and for our great state. And so I would definitely be opposed to it if elected to the Board of Commissioners. I would say no on that particular issue. I do not support offshore drilling and seismic testing off the shore of North Carolina.
Thank you. Mr. Shanahan.
Well, if the, I guess, first, if the federal government decides to allow offshore drilling, and we're talking about something that's 50 or 60 miles off the coast of North Carolina, I don't know how much say we're really going to have in that. We can certainly let our voice be known and lobby on behalf of the position of the county, but as far, as far as actual authority or stamp of approval, there might not be a whole lot that we can do as a county board. That being said, you know, am I ready today to say no, never to offshore drilling? I'm not. And that's because I think if someone can make the case and show the data that it is safe and that it would have a positive economic impact on the area, then it would be something that I would consider supporting. But it would have to meet a high bar. You know, God didn't give Onslow County mountains or canyons. He gave us beaches and rivers, and we have to protect those resources. And so you would have to meet a very high bar between, or before I would get behind that plan.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Solomon.
I agree. If the federal government wants to do something, they're going, they're going to do it. But I'm always in favor of exploring for, exploring for new resources. If that's a resource that's rich, that, that would prove rich to Onslow County, would provide growth and new jobs and economic development, then I would be for it. I haven't seen enough studies to answer this with any, any educated guess, so I would say that I would have to look into it, but I'm definitely in favor of, of looking at new resources.
Okay, and Mr. Foster.
Well, I remember the 510 nectar surfboard I got when I was about 11 years old, and the first thing I did was ride down to Topsail Beach, wipe out and scuff myself up pretty bad on some beautiful beaches. I remember going out in the New River with my dad, throwing over a shrimp trawling, bringing in some of the best, most beautiful shrimp that you know are going to fry up for a good Sunday afternoon dinner. So with all that being said, I love what we have here. The federal government can make that decision, but I want to make sure that the studies are provided to us that show us that those platforms 50 or 60 miles off the coast, if something happens, that those spills can be addressed. I don't want it coming ashore in Onslow County. I don't want it coming ashore in the beaches in New, or Brunswick County, and I don't want it coming ashore in Carteret County. Technology's bound to have grown to where if something goes wrong, they can address it immediately and take care of it. I want to see that information. Show me how it's changed and let me know, along with the rest of the citizens of this great, this great county whose beaches are one of our top, if not the top tourist attractions, our beaches will be safe. With that being said, I will guarantee that the citizens and the Onslow County Commission, we may not be there to make the final decision, we're going to have a voice at the table. And whichever direction it goes in, and we want it to go in, we'll be there to represent Onslow County.
Thank you. And Mr. Foster, you'll be, I'll ask you to address this next question first, and then we'll move down the, down the road here. And we'll stick.
I have one, I have one more rebuttal. So, yes, thank you. So I just want to continue on from what I said about the offshore drilling and seismic testing. My concern is I just don't want North Carolina to become a testing ground for this, seismic testing and offshore drilling. I don't want us to be the, at the forefront of discovering if a catastrophic, if a catastrophic event can take place. Obviously, it's been said, not enough testing has been put in place. My concern is that it's just going to be, it's going, it's going to take place too soon and that we're going to become the testing ground for this. And Onslow County, our seafood industry is, is very important economically to our county, and any disruption to that could put a big dent in our local economy. So that's one of the main reasons why I'm, I'm opposed to it. And like I said, we do not have a very big say in regards to preventing this. However, just from my point of view, I, like I said, I don't want to be the testing ground, and I just, I'd voice against it.
Thank you. Any other rebuttals? I'm trying to keep my eyes going in every direction, but it's really impossible. Okay, Mr. Foster, you get the next question, and then we will move down the row. And we'll stick at the beach, we'll stay at the beach. What direction should the commissioners take on issues of beach renourishment and a related issue of inlet stabilization, particularly the New River inlet specifically?
Currently, I believe the commissioners have sent some money to North Topsail Beach to where they're able to do some work to see what, what's going to be feasible and what's going to, to work down there to, to keep our beach. I've done a lot of reading on those structures, the terminal groins that can be placed at the beach, and it looks like that, yeah, it's going to help. It's going to help stabilize that end of the beach, but a lot of the studies have shown that where it's been utilized in other areas, there's an impact from that as well. And I believe it would be the north, further north, which would be on Camp Lejeune side, would start having some impacts from that. But I think we need to look at maintaining our beach renourishment and taking care of, of the beaches. Topsail Island is, it's not a secret anymore, as much as we would like to think it is, but has anyone tried to rent a house down on the beach recently? And they'll tell you, that's not available. You can start a year out from today, and you can't get that house you're looking at. So we do need to continue looking at how we are going to maintain those beaches and the nourishment programs. And the state of North Carolina is helping out a little bit, and if the federal government wants to put a platform and seismic testing out there, then maybe they should step to the plate and help maintain the beaches that the state of North Carolina and Onslow County depend on greatly. Beautiful place.
Mr. Hawley.
As far as beach renourishment is concerned, North Topsail Island is obviously our main concern here in Onslow County. Beach sedimentary, soil erosion is a great concern for residents who live on North Topsail Island or people who use it as a vacation resident secondary house location. Vacation, vacation rentals in North Topsail Island bring in revenue for the county. So beach renourishment should be a concern, and we already have a few things in place regarding prevention of soil erosion. And the, at the forefront right now is the, is using sandbags. This is a costly approach. We spent lots of money on this so far. Dredging is another option, and we've explored that avenue off the coast, dredging and replenishing the beach with sand from the ocean. But a long-term plan needs to be taken, and a long-term approach needs to be taken to this to prevent further erosion and to help with beach renourishment. As far as inlet preservation, that's another important aspect that we need to focus on. But as far as North Topsail Island is concerned and the beach renourishment program, I think that a more long-term and cost-effective approach needs to be taken since it is a barrier island and therefore susceptible to erosion in the long term.
Thank you. Mr. Shanahan.
So North Topsail Beach is an incorporated municipality. They have taxing authority, and this is an issue that they have spent a lot of money on. If we were presented with a proposal... If we were presented with a proposal backed by good science that would satisfy me that our money is going to be well-spent, then I'd be happy to see what sort of partnership we could engage with them on that issue. What I don't want to do is spend $8 million to throw a bunch of sand on the beach and then it's gone after two storms, which is something that's happened in the past. As it relates to the New River Inlet, I think that that is certainly an important issue facing the entire county. We have to keep that inlet open. Right now, we are dredging on a basis, either annual or every other year basis, and it's costing us a lot of money. And if we could put a jetty in the inlet that would allow for us to start dredging with less frequency and save money in that way, I think that that would be a very positive thing. We do have to keep that river open however, and that's an important challenge that is facing the board.
Ms. Sullivan, the issue on the floor is the issues of beach renourishment and inlet stabilization.
Well, I remember a few years ago, the county Commissioners voted to change the way that sales tax was distributed and one reason was because of the costs associated with that area for beach renourishment. The second thing is I know that they have an occupancy tax because they do have a lot of people coming down there and enjoying our beautiful beaches. That being said, I'm a small business person and I'm always on the side of the small business. The New River Inlet is very, very important to the fishermen, to the commercial fishermen there and to tourism and vacations. So, that being said, I feel like this problem has been kicked down the road and kicked down the road and kicked down the road and Band-Aids have been put on it. I think at some point in time, you have to bite the bullet and do something a little bit more permanent. I was speaking with somebody the other day about putting in the groins and the jetties or whatever they called, I'm not that educated on it, but he did say that you've got to go ahead and spend, you know, $8 to $10 million. It's going to be harsh, but it's also harsh when you build a new school for the first time. Sometimes you just have to make the capital improvement.
Okay, thanks. And we're going to start with you since you mentioned the issue of sales tax distribution. And I'm going to read this, this is a question from the audience. Several of the incumbent Commissioners, I'll just say incumbent Commissioners because several of them wanted to do it and how they could, that'd change when there's two more, they'll take four. But some incumbents Commissioners said they were willing to consider a change in the allocation of the sales tax to municipalities. Some people say, for example, that municipalities like Jacksonville, it's unfair that each of the residents of Jacksonville is only worth about $10. No, no, I'm sorry, that the residents of some towns are worth $10 while Jacksonville's residents are worth less than $3 in sales tax revenues. What would you be in favor of as far as changing the formula so all municipal residents are treated fairly?
And I believe some residents are worth $100. I think the pendulum swings that far when you're talking about this area of the county, City of Jacksonville, Richlands, I think it swings very far when you're talking, when you're breaking down that money per person. I was on city council when this was going on and I remember losing about $11 million out of our budget. The majority of the sales tax is collected then in that study, I think it was about eight to 10 years ago, so I'm not, I haven't looked at the study since then, but about eight to 10 years ago, the majority of the sales tax was collected in the city limits of Jacksonville. Richlands has grown up, I'm sure their numbers have changed. Swansboro has grown up. Sneed's Ferry has grown up. So, I think based off of the information that I have eight to 10 years ago, I was in favor of distribution based on where it was raised instead of ad valorem, I believe it is. So, I probably would be in favor of that if the numbers were that far off, $3 per person, $100 per person.
Thank you. Mr. Shanahan.
Yep. So, I know that the formula has changed a couple of times over the past 10 years or so and I guess we're trying to fine tune it to get it right. I don't think that the answer is necessarily to make sure that it's purely done based on a population basis and the reason for that is there are lots of parts of the county that don't enjoy the same population levels as Jacksonville, but that are really important and really important to the character and constitution of our county. We wouldn't be the same without North Topsail Beach, we wouldn't be the same without Swansboro. Richlands and Holly Ridge add a lot to who we are and I think that we need to make sure that the funding is fair, but we also need to make sure that the municipalities have access, especially the smaller municipalities have access to the resources that they need to provide a basic level of services to their citizens as well.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley.
Yes. So, disparagement of sales taxes, sales taxes, if in concern to the population, obviously it should be, okay, so whatever is done regarding sales taxes and since there's such a disparagement between, you said $3 and $10 between municipalities and out in the county, it's important that everyone has the same quality of life opportunities and sales taxes provide the resources to have this quality of life. And I think that when it comes to, when it comes to looking at something we can do to change this disparagement of sales taxes, it needs to take that into consideration and we need to ensure that people and people are all living, you know, relatively equally to where they can provide for their families and that the sales tax doesn't hinder any progress in their American freedoms and their freedoms as citizens in our county. So, there you go.
Thank you. Mr. Foster.
Hate to do this to you Elliot, but can you read that question for me one more time?
Yeah, you know what, I'm going to read it exactly as written, but I think there's some issues here that basically it's a question about the way the sales taxes or revenues are distributed in the county. And there have been some changes as has been pointed out. Some municipalities such as Jacksonville say it's unfair that each resident of some towns is worth $10 or more while Jacksonville's residents are worth less than $3. This is, I guess it's done by a population basis as opposed to perhaps an ad valorem basis as Ms. Sullivan pointed out, or perhaps where the sales tax is collected. Would you be in favor of changing the formula so all municipal residents are fairly treated? There's not such a disparity.
Right now, I'd be very much in favor to sit down and have this conversation with the representatives from all the municipalities. What impact did that decision have on them? What services have they possibly lost? What services has the county picked up and are providing? So, I understand those concerns from those municipalities because if that's what's taking place, then they saw a revenue loss. But at the same time, I'd really like to be able to sit down and really spend some time with the town council and the city councils from these areas and discuss, if nothing else, what other avenues do we have to make sure that we are addressing the needs of all the citizens across the county? So, I think it's a discussion that we can sit down and talk about and then where does that take us? We really need to work and maintain good working relationships and communication from county Commissioners, which I think they're doing a pretty good job now, but we want to make sure those municipalities also feel like they're at the table with the Commissioners in these conversations with the tax rate and where that money's going.
Well, you know what, I've grilled you enough and I think we'll go ahead and move on to the summations. And we will start with Mr. Shanahan, move to Ms. Sullivan and then back to Mr. Foster and Mr. Hawley. So, you have a minute and a half.
So, thank you to the chamber for putting on this event. I think it's been a productive and informative event and I appreciate the questions that I know Mr. Potter collected from lots of different people and so thank you to everybody who participated in that process. I said at the beginning, I'm running on a platform of fiscal responsibility, transparency and informed decision-making and if elected, that's what I'm going to achieve to do. It's about sitting down with people who have been there, who have built experience, who are stakeholders in issues that we're talking about. It's about talking with community leaders and business owners to put together solutions to the problems and challenges that are facing the county. But, you know, there's been some dire talk tonight, but the economic situation in our county is positive. We're coming out of recession and stagnation and seeing economic growth and now is the time for us to capture that, to shore up the fundamentals of our local government and help create long-term stability for future economic growth. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan.
I've been a resident of Onslow County for 25 years. I raised my family here and all four of my children graduated from White Oak High School. They're my inspiration to serve Onslow County. As a Commissioner, I will work in every way possible to ensure the future generations like my children, your children, have every opportunity to pursue quality careers and raise a family in a peaceful and safe community. As a Commissioner, I will also work hard for small businesses to help them start, grow and expand to create new jobs. And as a Commissioner, I will strive to be the bridge between the citizens and their government. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Foster.
As I stated, as we started this, it sure is a lot easier to sit out there than it is to sit up here, but it's been great. First thing I want to say is that I have a vested interest in Onslow County. I'm not going anywhere. I want to make sure Onslow County is that to everyone else, that they don't want to go anywhere. There's a reason folks retire from the military and stay in Jacksonville, North Carolina and Onslow County and the surrounding municipalities. My parents graduated from Dixon High School, the original Dixon High School, not to date my parents or anything. My wife graduated from White Oak High School, I graduated from Southwest High School, my son's graduated from Southwest High School. And I want to make sure everyone wants to stay here and know that I am vested in this great county. Four things I'll share with you in the next 37 seconds is education is the key to economic development in Onslow County. Onslow County Schools and Coastal Carolina Community College and really that regional skills center in Burton Park to make sure we have the employable citizens for businesses to come here. We must fund all of our county agencies appropriately to make sure the needs of all citizens are met. We need to make sure we have a treatment facility with the follow-up to take and support those that have to go through that crisis center and we need to make sure our law enforcement's in place to take care of that. And budgetary decisions must be addressed in a fiscally responsible manner and I appreciate your vote beginning April 19th.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley.
Yes. So, growing up in this county, it's become a county that I love and respect. My parents being local, growing up here, I was instilled with a sense of community and integrity and I think I can definitely bring that to the Board of Commissioners. With my experience in business and understanding of business principles through my education and further experience, I think I can use that opportunity to help the county. There are a lot of challenges that the county presently faces and there's going to be unforeseen challenges in the future, monumental challenges perhaps, but I definitely want to be able to help take those challenges and help present solutions to those problems and it would be great to have the support of the community, the community that I love and I just, I want to keep the integrity of Onslow County, also helping it grow economically and like I said, an overall respect for the county and I hope to have your vote starting April 19th through the primary on May 8th. So, thank you.
I'll turn it over to you, President.
Thank you. And I want to thank the candidates for being with us and thank you for your willingness to serve your county. It's very impressive indeed, so thank you. Also, thank you to our corporate sponsor, Duke Energy, our media sponsor, The Daily News, and our partner, the City of Jacksonville. If you missed any part of this forum, just check the listings on G10 for the rebroadcast times and dates. And remember, your vote does count. Absentee ballots are now available and if you wish to do the early one-stop voting, the dates, times and locations are all available on the Onslow County Board of Elections website. And Election Day is May the 8th from 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. at your local precinct. And again, your Board of Elections website will have your precinct listed for you. On behalf of the Jacksonville-Onslow Chamber of Commerce, thank you for joining our Meet the Candidates forum.[1774.01][1774.01][applause]